I make a motion to continue the open meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, do we have any motions?
I make a motion to proceed drafting a Minnesota Government Data Practice Act Policy and Procedure by the city attorney. Motion one.
I'll second that.
Let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next motion is to proceed with training, that the city will schedule training opportunities for the city employees and the city council to provide an overview of the procedures by the League of Cities. It's a data practice training.
The motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other motions? Nope. I think we'll continue on. Next item on the agenda is old business, and the first thing up on there for review is cannabis regulation. If you look in our packet, there's a copy of the ordinance that was passed back in, I think you did it at the end of July, you had a special, special meeting. And in section one there... I'm not sure exactly where it is. The city has authorized proceeding with a study and the work needed to draft a proposed zoning ordinance. The, the offers, we either do this on our own, or there's an offer through our city attorney, that they have a group of cities in the county going together that are doing the survey, and then we would all split that cost. Would, would you mind explaining that?
Yes, thank you. Matt Bendah, city attorney, as Muescher Exstrom said earlier, there's a lot of movement now to try to get, be ready when the cannabis business licenses go live on January 1st. You passed as a council a moratorium that said no businesses could go into place while you're doing a study, and so you have until January 1st to complete your study. And so, my office represents a total of two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight cities that have agreed to a similar process to do a moratorium and to move forward with the study. And so, my office has engaged a firm that specializes in municipality law, and they've been following these very closely. And so, we have them scheduled to do a series of meetings, so we're targeting either November 13th or the 14th. If you want to send a representative or two from the council to participate in these meetings, the goal of the meeting is to help you understand what type of zoning ordinances can you put in place, the time, place, and manner of having a cannabis business in the city of Twin Lakes, we want you to be ready for that. And so, we are drafting sample ordinances, and then to provide you the option, as Nikki Exstrom mentioned earlier, you can decide if you want to do the licensing yourself, or have the county do it. It sounds very attractive to have the county do it, but there are some specifications of you can't have as strict of limits if you do delegate that. So I want to make sure each city understands how that delegation works, and then you do have to do your own zoning, so the county cannot, their zoning ordinance doesn't apply within the municipal city limits, so each municipality needs to have their own zoning ordinance if they wish to regulate the time, place, and manner of where these businesses will open. And so, I think the goal today was for me just to present, again, that update that we're prepared to move forward with this, with the study. Want to make sure I answer any questions that the council has, and how this process is going to move forward, and then basically give me the, I don't think you need a motion, because I think it's in the ordinance, but if you want to make a motion for us to proceed with the, with you participating in this group study, that would certainly save you some money. We've negotiated a good rate of this attorney at $188 an hour, and then his work is going to be collectively, we're billing it in one file, and then I'm just going to equally share that between the cities that are, that are part of the study. Does that help?
Yes. Is there any questions? I believe we would want to motion whether we proceed with this group here, or we do something on our own, and who's, who's going to be responsible for it, and who's going to do it? So, ask questions, so we can decide if we want to move forward with what's presented to us right here with our city attorney. Any questions?
This all has to be done by January 1st, right?
Right, ideally you want it done by then, otherwise you're, you're in an unregulated situation where a business could apply for a license.
I, I think we should go with this group. The more resources we have, the, I think the better off we are than go on it on our own. That's just, yeah, I'll make a motion on that if that's, if we've got more discussion on it, but I think that'd be a wise avenue to go, to get more.
We have to do it one way or another anyway.
Well, that's it. I think.
I know we've been divided on eternity fees, that's why I wanted, you know, things presented like this, this would be proceeding with, with this group.
Well, there's going to be more fees, I mean, down the line anyway. Or doing it ourselves, I don't, you know, I'm not ready to take that on, that responsibility on ourselves to get all the legal IDs dotted and stuff, so. I guess I'll make a motion to go with the other, other cities to...
Motion's been made and seconded to proceed with Matt Bendah's office with the, the next steps for the survey and the joining the group. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then again, I do want to offer, if, you can either informally decide, or you could designate people to attend, the meetings, just make sure you don't have a quorum, obviously.
And the date again of the...
Uh, we're trying, I'm looking for availability between the 13th and the 14th.
So you don't have a time or a place or anything yet?
Here's what my plan is, we're going to try to do it the 13th or the 14th, I'm afraid I might end up doing it both nights, because some, some cities have their meetings that same night.
Yeah.
And so, this individual's going to either appear in person or by Zoom, and I'm going to offer a Zoom link to anybody that wants to attend, or you can come to my office, and I'll have it up on a, in a conference room on a big screen. So, I'm going to have him prepared to present a model ordinance for everybody to consider, and then answer questions on the pros and cons between the licensing, and then some of the pros and cons, I mean, if you want to, you can open a municipal dispensary if somebody decides to do that, I don't think anybody's talking about doing that, but again, some of those options at least have to be presented if anybody asks those questions.
Can you have it, can you email it to Lisa so she can let us know, so?
I will, I just want to make sure, if you guys have a night that you prefer, just let me know. So if it's the 13th...
It's definitely going to be in the evening, either...
That's what I'm planning, because most people have day jobs, so we're going to do an evening session.
They just don't want all of us to be there, because that would, we can't have everybody be there.
Yeah, you can't have a quorum, and you can designate, or you can just take offers of people to, to participate.
Okay.
But Lisa, if you just want to email me which night works best for your, your group, then I'll plug you in.
Okay.
Okay. Kathy, I'm planning on leaving after this, is there any reason I need to stay for the rest of the meeting?
I don't believe so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else want anything? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll proceed with the next item, and old business, that's the water problems, and I think last meeting, we didn't have anything, and the time before, we had talked about it a little bit. So, do we need that to stay on there, or do we want to finalize it? What were, what was the testing, and what was the test results?
All we ever heard was, was from a resident that said everything was okay.
Well, we didn't get a call back from the state or anything.
Didn't get nothing in the paper, but she has something in, on a paper, ask her.
No, I haven't heard nothing. I mean, do we get test results from the state?
Sandy said that he came up there and said everything was fine. He told us it takes 24 hours test.
And then you had a, you had a chlorine test right onto the spot right there when he was there, and that was fine, is that correct?
No, we never heard.
Did you get any letters?
We never heard.
About Travis?
They gave it back to Travis, but I don't, I never heard nothing.
Yeah, I certainly did, but they, they told me that they talked to you before the last meeting.
No, they didn't.
So they talked to you and sent you a letter? And everything around it?
Uh, no. No.
That's interesting to know.
And he won't return phone calls? So if you have better luck with him, you should say, maybe you should return somebody's phone call.
I guess, I didn't start any of that, but I would think they should contact you, because it wasn't my doing, so.
Right, well, that's what we thought. Maybe you have to go higher up.
Was it through?
Minnesota Department of Health, was it?
That's what it was.
Yeah. Keep bugging him, I guess.
Well, he told me he talked to you, so.
He said the chlorine was fine, yeah. And he said he would send a letter, and he never got a letter, so I thought maybe he sent it to you as well.
Because the chlorine was one thing, and then the bacteria was the second thing.
No, he said, he said they're aware that this town has a lot of magnesium.
Yeah, but he didn't say...
And that's why he was going to send, he was going to send something.
That's not true.
Well, that's what he told us. He said they were aware of it.
Because as a city, we know, we've been doing, we're in compliance as a city with all the testing and the levels of everything. That's, that's what we know as a city. So I, it sounds like we can't say anymore about that. I mean, that, that's, that gets...
Until we find out more.
At its end. So I'm going to, I'm going to leave that off there unless, unless you want to be on there again or continued, if you hear something or know something more.
There's nothing wrong with you.
Okay, thank you. Item three for old business, the creek cleanup and culvert repair by the Shell Rock River Watershed District. I'm guessing we don't have any update, or do, do you, do you have an update?
We do.
Okay, great.
By the end of December, he'll have everything under control, at least they don't know what's going on as far as what they get for money.
The grant's closed.
Grant's closed at the end of December, and they don't know exactly, and he's going to do it all the way down to the sewer plant, he says, whatever that means.
Okay. So we probably won't know until January, then?
January, middle of January.
Okay. January, January update. Okay. For new business, the next item is the backup camera for the fire department vehicles, and there's a quote that was in everybody's packet, and that quote was from Comtech Land Mobile Radio.
Excuse me, Kathy, we've got four bid requests out there right now, we're waiting for two to come back.
Okay.
We would like to have some input on what goes on our trucks.
Right, right.
Honestly, we're not really interested in a citizen's quote, you can thank them for their time, but we need to take a look at what's best for our department, since we're the ones driving the truck, not them.
How many, three requests, seven or three, four?
So you, so you consider...
Yeah, I went with four only because I think if we get, you know, four of them, and there's a best deal, let's see why they're the best deal, you know? And I, I just was able to find four just offhand like that, so that's why I kind of went with four instead of just the three.
And, and what did you call this one that we already have?
A citizen's bid.
Citizen's bid?
Yeah, we, I don't think that we ever went to them and asked them for a bid.
Are, are they one of the people you're getting a bid from?
No.
Why not?
Previous experience.
Do you want to fill us in on the bids you do have, and what kind of money we're looking at?
I haven't even opened them yet.
And explain what it, what happens, what's involved, what the end, end result is?
Yeah, um, I haven't opened them yet, we have two of the bids already in, we plan on opening them at our fire meeting, so I guess after fire meeting, I would have a better update for you.
I know, at one of our other meetings, there was some more description of how it all works and the best way to have it done, and so that information would be helpful. So we will table that until the December meeting.
Yes, I agree.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Number five, review and possible action on employee issues. We had a closed meeting about an HR issue, and this is the, a little summary from that. The background is, a city clerk inquired with League of Minnesota Cities, the Department of Labor, and other cities regarding a disciplinary review process, and due to the complexity of the issues and potential liability, both League of Minnesota Cities and the Department of Labor recommended that the city consult with their city attorney. The city has also received a written request for information and allegations against city officials. Council members are not unanimous on next steps. Possible action, one, consult with the city attorney, yes or no? Item two, consider proper response to written request for formal investigation regarding allegations against city officials. And number three, if not approved, to consult attorney, what are next steps? Who will be included? Who will present the documentation? What should the documentation be? And so on and so forth. So, on the record, because council members are not unanimous, I have asked for a vote on, a discussion and a vote on how possible action. Do we consult with the city attorney, yes or no? And if not, what are the next steps?
I think we pay our city attorney too much now.
So, so you're saying a no, you're saying a no?
I'm saying no.
That you, even though all the questions we've asked so far, and the recommendation is to do that, you're saying no?
No. I don't think it's... I don't think it was handled properly, and if it... To... Be addressed to that individual on what they feel that he, he or she is not doing properly, should have been brought up. Most, most employers, you know, call that person in and saying, hey, you're not doing your job, this is what you need to be done. And, so if you want to go that route, then I would say no to the attorney, but if you're going to, you know, not consider taking that action, then I guess the, I'll vote for the city attorney, so.
So by not wanting to go with the attorney, we're saying that as council, somebody wants to take the lead and take action and proceed, and they know what they need to do for documentation, and who should be in the meeting, and to know if the corrections are okay. So that's, that's three noes for consulting the city attorney. An item I didn't put on here, well, the second one, the city, a written request has come to the city for a formal investigation regarding allegations against city officials and hostile work environment. The city's, a written, we've received a written request. As a council, what do we do now? We, if, we proceed with a formal investigation, do we use a third party, do we just not do anything? Don't, don't do the investigation?
What's a hostile work environment?
Well, there's a few different definitions, I don't think I printed that one out, I don't want to misquote or misread, but it's an unhealthy and toxic environment to work...
Toxic? I thought unsafe.
That too, that, that isn't a hostile work environment in, in the definition that I know, but I agree, an unsafe environment should be addressed.
Yes, it should.
So, right now, how does the city want to respond? They want to not respond. They want to not take action, that's what I'm asking. Take action, yes or no?
Is it possible just to have, just a meeting with the, the individual, and just ask them if we're to have a closed meeting, just talk about it? Both things?
Including the request for investigation? Because it, because the, we were, like, we reserved written notice, you know?
What do we investigate?
The allegations. I'm just saying, as a city council, as a city, we, we receive a written request for a formal investigation.
A hostile work environment?
And allegations against city officials.
Who would that be?
I, you know, I honestly don't know if I can read that out loud or present that. I want to present just that allegations have been made, a request for a formal investigation's been made, and I want to know...
They would agree in a solace, I guess.
As a council, if you want...
Drop it, I guess, if that's what you want to do.
If you want to ignore it, or if you want to proceed. My recommendation, which I said before on all of this, is due to the complexity of it, to consult with the city attorney, and you've all said no on that, so if, I want to know if you want to proceed with an investigation. Linda, yes or no?
No.
Dave?
Yes.
Can we look and see how that investigation is, you know, if it's been done in-house, or has to be done?
I, I, there might not be a rule on it, but as divided as we are on all the issues, I don't think in-house could ever be say that it was fair. That's just my personal opinion. I know, I know, but it's kind of...
For nothing to be there.
I don't want to say it's the way of the world, but... I'm not trying to spend any of the city's money, I'm just trying to cover liability, you know? We don't want another, you know, civil suit, or a lawsuit, or, you know, whatever it might be, for not take, doing proper procedures and having proper documentation. And I, I just don't, I can't make that call alone, so that's why I want it on the record for what each city person, how they feel. So far, it's they don't want to consult an attorney, and they don't want to do an investigation.
I don't want an investigation.
So you're, are, are you a maybe in our record?
Yeah. Just do more. I can't just do it.
Well, and, and item three, if not approved, to consult the attorney, what are our next steps? Who will be included? Who will present documentation, and so on? And I believe that's where you were talking about, just have a meeting, decide who's going to be in the meeting, and how is it going to go? For documentation, is it going to be, like, if there's photos, you know, number the photos on each, decide which photos are safety concerns, which photos are maintenance, organization, have a written page on photo one, this is the problem, this is, you know? And then, who's ever in the meeting, decide on what should be done, and then a timeframe to do it? That's a suggestion that I'm hearing. And I, and I, I don't want to go away from this meeting, like, well, who's going to do it? What, what are we going to do? I think we need to decide, and especially, like was brought up, I agree, safety concerns, those are the number one things. We're not in a public comment meeting, but do you, I, you might have relative information?
I do have relative information to this, because you're talking about two different things here. One is a work performance issue, and another one is a formal complaint issued by somebody against city officials for creating a hostile work environment, that's what I'm reading out of this. Okay, that's two separate issues?
This isn't public forum time.
I'm just throwing that out there to protect the city.
Yes.
I'm trying to protect the city here.
Well, I'm going to say at once, that you've been warned.
Yes.
Well, I'm glad, thank you much.
Okay, okay. That, item, item one was our, to do the city attorney or not, that went as a no. Item two was doing the investigation, and that was a no. So now we're back to, item three is the original concerns, how to prove, you know, how to, that were brought up, to go forward with them. So, we want to have a meeting?
Sure.
And typically, when you do HR things, you don't, you don't have all the members of council there. You know, you, you, typically, another thing that we haven't done with HR policies, is you have an HR committee, where you designate two or three people to be those, that committee, to handle these kind of things.
Sure.
And we don't have that, but I believe because of the safety concerns, we want to proceed right away with a sit-down, go over the photos, who wants to do the documentation? I would like to suggest that the people that took the photos, group them as safety concerns, maintenance concerns, and other, that for, number the pictures, for the numbered pictures, write what the violation or concern is. And then, then either ahead of time have a suggestion, or as the group, we come up as a suggestion. And...
That's a good idea.
As, so how fast could the picture takers put together documentation, written documentation? And who all, I'd like to, who would like to be in the meeting?
We can't have a quorum.
Right. Well, we can, we can, if we have it in an open meeting, have posted out there and do it, do it as an open meeting. an open meeting, and, you know, sit up here, go through the photos, and all have an input on it with public listening. Or we have a smaller HR committee that would not everybody there present, and then we'd have to decide who should be there. So these are the kind of things that I'm prepared to talk about, but I don't like, not, I'm against not having the city attorney and knowing how to proceed without more liability. And again, I'll say that's why I want it on the record with the council's decision on what to do and how they want to do it.
Is, just keep some quorum, is that, are there too many of us there?
Yeah. Quorum is like the majority of, you know, like three of us. I don't think there can be three or more. I think it's got to be two or less. You know, like maybe two plus the clerk. And then plus the parties that we want to be there, which would be city employee or employees, and the clerk, and if the employees want to have a representative present. That'd be my, from me, I'm not an expert, I've tried to do some reading, and I don't like going out on my own and doing that, but that, from what I've read, that's what I would suggest.
I'm bound to be there and retake forms of meeting.
We have photos that were already presented.
Just re-go through them.
So Tanner, you would like to be present?
I don't know.
One of you, one of you two? David?
Sure. I'd like to.
And then Lisa?
I want to contact them.
And then talk to the city employees that would want to be there, and have them there, and their option to have representatives there. And we want, I think we're all in agreement, to do it sooner than later, so in November, before our next council meeting.
That's fine.
And it will be, we'll let Lisa do the reaching out, do the scheduling, and do the coordination. For the documentation, the written documentation that will get put together with numbering photos and describing what is wrong.
I know what you're asking for.
Yeah. Can you have that to Lisa so she can give it to everybody who's going to be in the meeting before the meeting? Please and thank you. And then now, what I just described, I'd like to have a consensus on if you're in agreement with that. Linda?
Yes.
David? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the hall kitchen bathroom remodel update.
Done.
Have you noticed?
I know, I know that the floor was spiffed out. I have not been in there.
You know how bad this floor was? It was awful. The bathrooms all have new...
Borders.
Borders. What do you call it?
Trim.
Trim. Those are all scrubbed?
So when you say done, is there, is there's no...
Well, I got one more thing I want to do.
Okay.
I'd like to get, and I don't know if they even make it, like a five-inch threshold, so we can cover up those, where they widen the doors. How? I don't even know if they make them that big, but...
You mean like across the whole door?
Yeah. Yeah, like a threshold.
Cover up or widen the door?
Yeah, if it's not against any...
They're ADA compliant now, them bathrooms are.
Yeah.
I had a heck of a time in that toilet in my late bathroom. I have a bill for this.
For this? What is this? What's been done already?
Yeah.
Scrubbing the floor, renting a scrubber.
And rented a scrubber, and thank God we did. I didn't, I didn't even charge anything for the painting registers, and registers were awful.
So when this was going to be on the agenda to talk about at the next meeting, I don't, I don't know, should any one of us proceed and do things without having it at the council?
Well, you know what?
I appreciate it that it's done.
We have bingo every Sunday.
Yes.
And this place was such a pit.
Yes, and that's why it's on the agenda.
And we have to do something. And if you don't want to pay for it, then you're welcome.
I'm just, we're discussing it, Linda, you know?
I don't want to discuss it. I don't want to. When, when somebody does, I mean, I worked up here three, four times, and, but everybody that came into bingo Sunday, oh geez, the floor looks nice. Man, what'd you do to them bathrooms? Then I felt good about it.
Yes, I'm just saying, any one of us could have probably done that at any time.
Yeah, but nobody did it.
I'm just saying, go and make it an improvement, but we just don't go do that on our whole, is what I'm saying.
Well, if you don't think it was worth it, I mean, that's...
How much, how much is the bill? I'm not saying it wasn't worth it.
$300.
I'm just saying, when we talk about expenses and council's approval, that's all I'm saying.
Got a lot cheaper than oil, I'll tell you that.
So, explain what you did again. We got the floors all signed up, then you, what, some...
We rented a scrubber, and we scrubbed the floor, then I had, I had to buy two jugs of wax, because there's a lot to cover here. And Janelle donated enough trim for one bathroom, and I had to buy another one. We thought maybe one box would do it both, but it didn't. And I think we got like six panels left, and I'd like to put them in front here, in between there, and over there, because these look bad.
And we have, because the hall is getting used now every Sunday because the Fire Relief Association asked to use the hall.
Right.
There's also been, we all know, everything's over budget, and we all know a statement was made about being able, another organization being able to pay for some of these things. So that's, you know, that's kind of why I'm discussing it and bringing it up, that here it is, we're over budget, here's another bill, it wasn't talked about, and there's another organization...
That's why I said, you're welcome. So now drop it.
Okay. I'll drop it.
And if I come in here and dump some crap on the floor, somebody else can clean it
I'll pay that bill personally, since the city doesn't want to. I'll pay that bill out of my pocket.
Well, we're trying to have the discussion, and Linda's backed out of it.
I did wrong. I did wrong by cleaning the place up.
Okay, I think the place looks gorgeous, so I'll pay it out of my pocket.
It did, but we were going to be discussed, last month, we were going to discuss it this month on what needs to be done, and it was, oh, we just, yeah.
Well, we're going and doing something, gee, my God, for 10 years, nobody did a damn thing in here, you know?
I mean, under one of them tables, it was wrong.
You're back in this town, my God, you people, nobody wants to do nothing in this town. Somebody goes and does something and bingo, nobody wants to pay it. Let's go spend $700 on water, and I'll do that again. Here we go again. 300 bucks to fix the bathrooms and then do the floor, and you don't want to pay it. That's okay, that's okay. This place is really going...
I know when we were going to talk about a model, a remodel and an update, the first thing I was going to mention, that the way this building was built, that whole wall over there, water just come, if there's a heavy rain, water just comes rushing in. And before we started putting any money into some repairs, that's, I was going to mention that.
I didn't want to do anything fancy, like you guys, you guys got all ripped out of shape about ADA compliance and all this. No, I just wanted to clean it up, and whoever put that tile in the bathroom before just went around the corner, and it came loose, and there was mold behind there. Just, you're welcome. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you for cleaning the bathrooms. They look really good.
And waxing the floors, that's very nice.
I think all it was is just, maybe just, you know, could I rent a, you know, a machine or whatnot? I think, I would make a motion that we would reverse you for that, because I do think it's worth it, that they look really good.
I would agree with that too. Just, we're, you know, we're trying to prevent these surprises, or people out on their own doing things. We're trying to be, be a better council together. So we'll add that. Let's, let's add that to the bills.
Okay.
Here. And then on that, that maybe think of something else that wasn't on there that I'm going to, now that we have the hall being rented, or not rented, every Sunday for the bingo, is that, right now, does that intend to be every single Sunday going forward? If we, so are Sundays closed off to community and public renting the hall? And we give up that, that income, and we say no to maybe people that have always, you know, wanted a Sunday, Sunday rental as a council? Like, you know, what, is that...
Well, I guess if, if we were notified far enough ahead of time, you know, so we could tell people, no, we're not going to have bingo this particular day.
The original council vote was that we wouldn't be allowed to play bingo in the hall every Sunday. I think, like I told Tanner the one day, I said, God, Larry, why'd you sit out in the cold? Why didn't you come up here? We could have either moved the trucks out, you could have used that, or we'll swap, we'll go play bingo out there, and we'll turn the heat on out there.
Yeah.
We're totally willing to work with people. We're not trying to take over City Hall and make it so that nobody can rent it. We're totally willing to help out and work out with people.
Because we can borrow other tables. I can borrow from the church.
Yeah, so, and, and I don't know, if somebody wanted to come in and rent this space to have that activity going on in there, you know, I don't know if you use the bathrooms at the kitchen when you're doing your bingo stuff. So it might sound okay in theory, but I don't know.
If there's a reasonable amount of time, if they call on Thursday and want it for Sunday, I would say no. But if they ask, you know, weeks ahead of time, so you can start telling...
Yeah, a reasonable amount of time.
There's a reasonable amount of time given, that...
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Because there are, because some holiday people, or holiday people...
Like probably over Christmas, we won't play bingo.
Yeah, you know, because there's, like I said, Christmas parties, usually, I know we've had rent here and stuff, so...
Yeah, if you guys want to set like an absolute timeframe ahead of time to let us know, then we can let our people know when we get here. We actually did have somebody just ask that, Otana, just asked that on Sunday. He said, if you're going to cancel bingo, how are we going to know? How should we find that out?
I told him, we never cancel.
So our last council, is 30 days' notice sound good?
Oh, I don't think we even need that, at least a couple, couple weeks.
30 would be nice, but like I said, we're willing to work with anybody. So, I mean, if it happened to be late notice, somebody...
Preferably two, 30 days is nice, at least two weeks.
Yeah.
I think that's fair. Minimum two weeks. 30 would be ideal, 30 days.
Okay. Now, now I don't know on the cannabis thing earlier, since we agreed to do that, the two letters that we got, what we, how we need to respond to them. So I'll have Lisa ask how we respond to them. Any other new business?
I'm going to bring this up, you can't have that meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
Because it says here that the county canvassing board shall meet between the third and the 10th day after the election. Well, that's only two days after.
Does the election day count?
It says after the election day. So that means you're not counting that election day. Between the third and the 10th days following the election.
I have read that before. I believe we have, we have met in two days before. We've met as soon as the results were ready. So, if that's the case, we'd have to pick another day and post it.
It could still be like Monday, but...
We could do Friday. That'd be the third day, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Lisa just can't be here.
I don't have to be here, no.
Oh.
I don't know. You just have to take a roll call, you have to look at the results, you have to declare them.
Someone could take notes or...
I'd rather do it on Monday.
Then you're just, yeah, you're just waiting the whole weekend, that's all.
I can't Tuesday.
And, and as far as I know, you can get on the Secretary of State website and see the results before then. We just, we just have to... We get a big long tape, and it shows, it shows the write-ins, and shows the number of votes for each candidate, and we, we just have to look at it and declare it.
Yeah.
Oh.
Takes like 10 minutes, not even.
I do believe, when we, before we posted it, Lisa did call the county and talk to them, and I don't know if that was any part of what she was told.
They didn't specify the days, they just said that they would, were hopeful that they would have everything by Thursday at the latest. And so, that's why I came up with Thursday, so we could have it sooner rather than...
So the following, the following Monday, next Monday is what?
12th Veterans Day.
So we can't do Veterans Day?
Why?
I think it's one of the holidays, we can't do it.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's what I think, I don't know, I could be wrong.
I can't do the 12. That's our rule of this...
Well, let's count, let's count out, when's the 10th day? When's the last day that we could do it?
Are you counting business days, or are you counting consecutive days?
I don't know.
I think it's consecutive.
I think it's consecutive too.
It just says the third and the 10th days following the election.
Yeah, the next Friday, the 15th, and it's the 10th day. Let's just pick next Wednesday then, we're between the third and the 10th day.
Huh?
The 13th. Let's say the 13th, 7 o'clock, is that, I mean, I know Lisa's hours are, that would be, I think...
On which day?
The 13th.
Wednesday, the 13th? Well, if we're talking about joining that group, that's going to be, that's going to be one of the nights.
Well, I guess I don't, I don't, not all council people have to be there, I just can't do a Tuesday night, so, but couldn't have it that night.
No, not everybody, I think we have to have...
A majority.
A majority, so, if one person won. Well, we're learning that a lot of things, we have to do differently.
If you've done it before in two days...
Well, that doesn't mean if it's wrong that we should continue to do it that way.
Do it Sunday noon, and then stick around and play bingo Tuesday.
There you go. Even serve you food.
So, so I think what we're settling with Wednesday?
No.
What?
No.
I haven't been following along.
But Wednesday, Thursday is supposed to be the cannabisy thing, so...
So Tuesday...
Tuesday, I can't make it, but if the majority can be it, it'll be it.
Do you know if Tuesday works for you?
Yeah, I can be there.
Okay, the 12. Tuesday, the 12, at 7 PM.
And you repost that then?
Tuesday, the 12, at 7. Okay, complaints. Sounds like there, unfortunately, there was something in the pile here, and I think we disagreed on that it has to... Any other new business?
Well, I think that that first pass thing against Keith should be retraced. Well, I think that, that trespass thing against Keith should be retracted. He never done all them things, they're saying. I, I watched the tape and there's nothing. I mean, Vinda lied. Do you wanna see the tape?
No, because I, I know what that feels like and I know what that person felt like.
She was on tape and she was fine.
She was being nice and cordial that her job wants her to be, even though she could've been very frightened and intimidated inside.
That's her choice to be.
And that's, that's, no more of that.
Okay.
Okay, any other new business? Okay, these, got some papers here. I don't know if I'll read both of them. I haven't read it all the way through, so I'm not sure. And it's, it's not signed, and I know we've had conflicting information on, um, if you have to name the person who sent it or not. But this one's not signed, so. Uh, City Council and Mayor of Twin Lakes, there's an issue with the dog that El Callahan has. It has been going on for some time now. When he has the dog at his house, maybe I should just summarize this. It's a barking dog.
Does he still have that?
Yeah, he keeps it down the shop.
Oh, does he? Okay.
And again, about his shop with the junk outside. Uh, someone's been going through the creek with a four-wheeler. Not sure what's going on with farm-type animals. You, do you guys still have chickens? Says you have chickens, okay. Dave and Linda have chickens. It's against the ordinances.
Against what ordinances?
The city ordinances.
The city ordinances. So do we need to?
Oh, we can't have chicken, no?
No, that, you never could.
Really? When?
It's ever.
We adopted the.
We didn't.
We did. We can't have chicken. Are we gonna have chicken?
I mean, the, we, we adopted the Maine, Minnesota Basic Code of Ordinances and it does not allow for, um, those type of animals in the city. Chickens, goats, ducks, pigs, horses.
Well, they don't make it around my chickens, no?
I'm just saying it's against the ordinance. I didn't, I, I didn't think.
What ordinance is that? Which ordinance? You show me that, that book.
It's the same farm thing, one I think we've been talking about and voting on. But you can, you can look up the Minnesota Basic Code.
I'd be glad to see that one.
And if.
Wanna go back and get that? Sure it's back in the back room, eh?
Yeah.
I'll wait.
Well, we, if, if that needs to be changed, I'm just gonna say.
Boy, it sure does, cause I think we voted on it one time and then nobody ever.
Yeah, I, I thought so, too, and it.
I thought so, too.
It's not in any minutes.
No, I'm. Yeah, I'm sure we talked about it. Are you gonna make chickens, huh?
Yeah, we talked about it, we.
Oh.
No, we agreed on ten chickens, is what we agreed on at meetings.
I don't know what that is. Oh, man, somebody else forgets most stuff about.
I know I've been recording longer than you guys, if you wanna use my phone, go back and listen, you're welcome.
Okay. Yeah, cause to have a date, cause, yeah, I felt like that we talked about it, but we looked and then we, we couldn't find anything. And if we did amend an ordinance, then, then you publish it in the paper and, um, what's been brought to our attention is, um, if that's a zoning thing, I don't know if it is a zoning thing, that there, and on passing ordinances, we might need a, um, public hearing and a ten-day notice before those things are gonna be talked about and discussed. Another thing that we have missed or need to do differently. So, yeah, if you can know when that meeting was and maybe even give Lisa a recording.
Yeah.
And we'll add that to the next agenda. I felt like it, too, and we couldn't find anything. You kinda remember it, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I, I remember like ten chickens and no roosters.
Right.
Okay, we'll put that on the agenda for next month.
Price of eggs, you should change it to twenty chickens.
And, um, do more research on the statute, I think maybe 419 about, uh, the, the days and the publishing and the requirements for, I was unclear on if it's for any ordinance change or specific ordinance changes.
Yeah, you're supposed to send the name of the state.
And we just have to post it in the paper.
Paper and?
I know that's, I know that's for sure for zoning, but I don't know if this is under zoning. That's what I'm saying. So we'll have Lisa check into that, and I, I could be very wrong, but I think it's 419, statute 419. Okay, any other new business? And, and beyond this complaint. So we're going, we'll move on to the final guest, second guest, final guest, public comment. Please raise your hands and I'll call you up to the podium. Keith Haskell?
I know you guys don't always like what I have to say, and you don't have to believe or take salt to any of it. Some of you do, some of you don't. I think tonight I identified some confusion that might help you and everybody else in the room, and I'm not pointing at you as the mayor, I'm pointing at you as the chairman of the board, okay? You keep talking about Minnesota code that you've adopted, but a lot of times you guys say you've adopted the Minnesota League of Cities ordinances. They are two separate, just disconnected associations. They have different roles and different codes and different ordinances. That might be why some people are getting confused as to what's been adopted and what policies or procedures in zoning you're going under. Secondly, while I'm kinda glad to hear that you're attempting to make some changes in council, and I've heard you say more than once tonight, some of the things in the past haven't been done correctly and you're trying to change that. I applaud that, but I also have to ask if you hear yourself tonight. How does somebody get a bill or perform a function without City Council approval to clean and paint a bathroom or whatever it is they did? And I get that, I really do, I would expect it. There's a dollar limit set beforehand or whatever, but I also applaud your efforts and I'm glad that somebody made the motion to pay it. Here's where I go backwards on that thought. Somebody decided to not involve this City Council in a public data request decision back in May. That's why we're where we are. This council never voted to not fulfill the public data request. Okay? Somebody else decided that for the council without the authority to decide that. Then someone decided without council agreement to involve the city attorney in that public data request. That's not me causing bills with the city attorney or city attorney bills for this council. I waited May, June, July, August, September, October 16th before I finally got the data request. That's not me creating the problem. That's not me making the bill. I came here every single month to this board and continually said, I still don't have my public data request. Eventually, it led to a lawsuit. I get how Pat feels that I'm the one creating the expense. No, I'm the one that asked for it to get corrected, month after month after month. And now you're gonna have the city attorney draft a public data policy and that's fine, you probably should have one. But it's in the Minnesota League handbooks. There's three different handbooks. It's over six hundred pages. There's the mayor's handbook, there's the small city handbook, and then there's a handbook for just HR. So please don't think that because you read one, you don't have a resource to supportive documents or sometimes contradicting documents with the other manuals. They're all online, they're all free. You're members of the Minnesota League of Cities. But sometimes the double standards confuse more than just you guys, sometimes they confuse the double, the public. As far as something else goes, and I'm just gonna say this cause I do have knowledge of it, when a city council member or members comment on an employee's performance or lack of, which also on the record goes way back to May, that's their job and their duty to make note of those. When employees retaliate because of that legitimate complaint that's happened since May, and I realize that's my opinion that it's legitimate, okay? It's against the federal law to retaliate against an employee or a council member that made a report about safety or employee performance. I looked it up again today, re-verified before I was talking about it, so I'm just gonna say, maybe tonight, I know you've talked about having a meeting with an employee, but in the future, when there's so much dissension about what to do, and this has gone on since May, maybe tonight you guys could have said, or last meeting when it first came up, could have said, we need to have him here at the next month's meeting and go hammer this up. Because then it wouldn't have been delayed another two months and there wouldn't have been all the animosity. Good luck. I'm glad to see some of the improvements that are happening.
Next?
Hey, do you have one question? Where does the board derive the authority to dictate what people do on their own private land? Cause I've already heard one thing that's, that's unconstitutional, I'm wondering why you're not taking action on it. To provide, to tell somebody that somebody has to go before a board in order to do something on their own land is unconstitutional, it violates the Fourth Amendment. So I would suggest, I don't know, I mean, what are you gonna do about it? Cause if nothing's done, I'm gonna have to take legal action. You need to follow the Constitution. You have a, a duty to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. And that also means that if there's any laws that are written that are repugnant to the Constitution, it is your duty to repeal it.
Can you say which statement exactly that was?
Uh, it was just in this meeting.
I know, but what, what particular statement?
If, if somebody has to go before a board to ask permission to get a permit, anything on their own private property, it violates the Fourth Amendment. So go ahead and, anything that you've ever done, apply it.
That's why we have.
Does anybody have to go before this board in order to do anything on their own private land? Do you have ordinances that mandate that somebody has to go before a board, say, to build a fence on your, on your, your, your land, your own private land? Do you have anything like that? I mean, you, you obviously have people that go before the board to apply for permits. It violates the Fourth Amendment. If it's not commercial, it's private. It's covered by the Fourth Amendment. And if you don't do something about it immediately, I'm gonna be forced to take constitutional action and hold you accountable.
That's interesting. There's all laws all over the place that we know.
Unconstitutional. That's why I'm running for mayor and I'm having all of those repealed. We've gone along enough. Our government has gone, gotten out of control where they think that they can tell somebody that they can't do something on their own private property. And it violates the Fourth Amendment. So I encourage you to learn the laws and start getting to work.
Thank you. Next, we're still on public comment.
I'd like to comment. First of all, you're a member of the press, correct?
Yep.
Yep. And you're a journalist, correct?
Yep, First Amendment.
I thought one of the first things that they teach in journalism school is to report the story, not be the story. That's, that's a general impression that I've got about that.
You don't understand the First Amendment, then? Cause I'm, I'm addressing a grievance, which is my First Amendment right, so you don't know what the Constitution is.
He's interrupting me, would you say something to him? Okay. It's okay for some people, but not for me, I guess, but that's okay. And as far as Mr. Haskell's last comment about a city employee, he wasn't gonna be called in to, for a job review or anything. It's my understanding that that meeting was for to terminate that employee. It had nothing to do with correcting any, uh, job issues or anything like that, it was immediate termination. And he wasn't given the opportunity to have an open meeting on it or wasn't even told ahead of time that that was gonna be the issue. So if we're gonna talk proper procedures and that, that should've been followed also. You know, so, uh, I'm done.
Anyone else?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, then we'll move on to the bills for approval. The first bill? That I listed separately.
There's no agenda against you, but. Sorry.
First bill that I listed separately was at the, at the close of, after the meet, last meeting, Janelle brought up the accountant's bill for the Fire Relief Association and it's $1,460. And, uh, there's a statute, 424A, that says fire relief can pay for their expenses, they have to have it in their bylaws.
Yeah.
But they can, they can do it, I know. I just wanna say again, the fire department is over budgeted, the, uh, and this is another example of where, if, if their bylaws said they could pay bills, they could be paying their accountant's bills, their, um, I can't think of what you call it when you have your treasurer bonded, their bond, all those, there's, they have, the Fire Relief, they've told us multiple times, is a separate organization with their own tax identity. They do have some of their own bills and they don't have bylaws to pay them. So they're, they come to the city when the city supposedly has nothing to do with it for the city to pay. And I just wanna say they're already over, the city is, and the fire department's already over budgeted. So that's all, the point I wanna make, that statutes allow it if their bylaws allow it, they could make a bylaw change and pay their own bills. So, but like she said, right now, their bylaws don't allow them to pay it. So as a city, it's fire relief, separate tax identities, fire relief invoice.
Why has the city always paid it?
I think because they didn't know any better. They didn't know that, that it was this. Cause we heard this all over and over again this year. The city and the fire department and the fire relief have always been friends. You know, the city approves the annual pension amount, the city has to have two members on the board.
So now you're saying they're not friends, so now they can pay their own?
No, I'm just saying that that's what it, what it has been. Right now, we're over budget and if they could've been paying, had the money and been paying their own bills all along, I don't know why they wouldn't. That's all I'm saying. So I'm just making the point that there's a statute, that this, there's certain type of expenses they can pay whether they have a general fund or not. It's allowable out of the special fund if their bylaws are written that way. You know, is it, is it convenient not to have the bylaws that pay any bill so somebody else has to pay your bill? Somebody else that you say has no part of you to pay your bill? That's all I'm saying. So it's in our bill pile to pay, and I wrote, put it separately because council, this is something council is aware of if they want to approve paying a Fire Relief Association invoice. It might not have always been clear or brought to attention, that's all. It might not have always been clear or brought to attention, that's all. So, do you want this to be in the regular city bills to pay, Linda?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
No.
And they can't currently pay it right now, is that what I got, they can't pay it because of the bylaws?
Yeah, currently can't because of the bylaws.
State statute allows it if their bylaws allow it.
The city has always paid it, Tanner. There won't be another one because of PARA, right?
There won't be another accountant bill, but there could be other bills.
Yeah, but there won't be another one of these.
Okay, so we'll go on with the bills. Travis, meetings with FEMA, sewer discharging and water in sewer and training classes, two thousand nine dollars and seventy-one cents. Lisa. One thousand two sixty-one fifteen, fifty-five hours. Larry's hours covering for Travis, he's got water, wastewater and general hours, total five forty-four, forty-six. Reimbursement for Lisa. Paper envelopes, pens. Been apt to assist in dictating the meeting minutes. Total of all those items, one hundred and twenty dollars and forty cents. The seasonal mowing of the park, one thousand seven fifty. Reimbursement to Linda for the, for everything she spoke about earlier, the total is three hundred dollars and thirty-six cents. Linda, you added a hundred dollars of labor on here.
Yeah, that's what I paid him to operate the scrubber.
Okay.
I couldn't do that.
Okay.
And to put the trim on.
Just, can you let Lisa know the person's name until we have that?
Yeah, it's right there, it's on that pink slip too.
This guy?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chad Roberts.
Yep.
Thank you. The Relief Association accountant's fee, one thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Hawkins Chemical, the chlorine cylinder, demerite, twenty dollars. Do I start taking things apart that are supposed to stay together?
There's probably gonna be a bill coming from Lairz and he's always a little late.
Yeah. Um, ACHs, the PARA, fifty-two dollars and thirty cents. Nine forty-one employers' federal tax, seven hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-six cents. Freeborn Mauer, six ninety-seven thirty-three. Minnesota Energy, forty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. And WCTA, one hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Do I have a motion to pay those bills?
I'll make the motion to pay the bills.
Motion's been made and seconded by Linda and Dave to pay all the bills, all in favor, I propose. Motion carried. Next meeting is Monday, December second, following Wednesday, the twelfth, election, declare election meetings.
Tuesday, the twelfth.
Tuesday, the twelfth. Sorry, sorry.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the twelfth, for the special.
Tuesday, the twelfth. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Meeting is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.